Please rise for a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Miller, could you please call the roll?
Chairman D'Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Mr. Bushnell.
Here.
Mrs. Kiefer.
Here.
Mrs. Seaberg.
Here.
Mrs. Sebeski.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Ms. Alonso.
Here.
Ms. Maddick.
Here.
Dr. McGorick, are there additions and deletions to the agenda?
We do. We have a requested trans- student transfer request and a personnel addendum that both will be added to the consent agenda.
Thank you. I assume we have no spotlights too early in the year. And we'll move to Board Committee reports. Mr. Williams, anything on academics?
No report.
No report, sir. You weren't next, but okay. Education support, Mr. Albrecht?
Sir, if he could pretend there's a window behind us, I think we'd overlook New Baldwin, and that's the progress report. It's doing great.
Okay, I think the window should be on that side.
Is that what- you're right. There's no windows. I'm misorientated.
Okay.
Hope they didn't build a school in the street.
In the street. You were in good shape. I was not the civil engineer.
Civilianities.
Mrs. Sebeski?
No report.
On policy and no report from finance or personnel. Thank you, Mr. Bushnell. Board member comments. Let's start with Ms. Maddick.
Thank you. As of y'all know, school starts on Monday, so let's start off with a great year. And I think a great way to do that is to make this year the year that everybody gets involved. Manassas City Public Schools has so many different opportunities for students to get involved, whether it's a sports team, it's a club, or an activity, just something you can do with friends, a study group. And so I really want it to be this year the year that you start going to those sports events, or join that club. And if it's like, if it's something that you're really interested in and the school doesn't have it, work with the staff. They all- they want you to be involved, so they will be your sponsor and work with you to start that club. Iris and I started a book club at Osborne. There wasn't one, so we talked to a staff member, and he helped us out, and we started one. So just get involved, because school is really important and going to class, but doing things outside of school is really important, because that's also bettering your education, because you're learning and making relationship. So let's make 2016, 2017, the year that you're really involved and making new friends. Thank you.
I'll try. Thank you. Ms. Alonso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past Monday and Tuesday, the class of 2017, we painted our senior parking lot correlating to the theme of kings and queens of 2017. And this Thursday is Eagle Kickoff with the first football game of the season versus North Stafford. And this- also this Thursday, all elementary schools in the City of Manassas are having their back-to-school night slash open house.
Very well. Very good. Very good. Have any English teacher around here? Ms. Seaberg?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Our teachers have been busy recharging themselves for a powerful year ahead. Monday's convocation was a great kickoff for staff division-wide with information, a motivational speaker, and many workshops geared towards professional development. I don't think any of us are going to forget the speaker, Adam Lucens, who wrote the book The Power of the Teacher. It's great. As the girls mentioned, back-to-school nights starting tomorrow night at Baldwin, so please check your school's website for the dates and the times and other specifics for your school. I'd like to encourage all the parents to check in with their teacher and other school members to come at these back-to-school nights, because it's a great way to find out about the best ways to stay informed and how to help your student, and even to consider how you might be able to get involved. We've already mentioned freshman orientation and Eagle Kickoff on Thursday. And parents can connect with the PTSA at Eagle Kickoff, and also along the lines of going to the athletic events, you can get an athletics booster pass. You just pay for it for the whole year, and then you don't have to worry about it at each game. So I just wanted to wish everyone a safe and happy new school year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Kiefer?
Thank you, and I'm happy to be back from vacation. I missed everybody, and I'm looking forward to get all caught up here tonight. You know, the key words tonight are back-to-school. All I can say is I wish everybody a great year. And again, just to echo, you know, get involved, find out what's going on at the back-to-school nights, volunteer, get to know everybody, get to know faces, and just have a really great year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Sebeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to be able to welcome everyone back to the 2016, 2017 school year. I was at convocation with some of these great people on Monday, and the energy in the room was amazing. It was a great morning for everybody, and I think a great way to start our year off. I will go through all the things that Mrs. Seaberg did, but try- you know, it's important that we get out there and go to these back-to-school nights and these kickoffs. As parents, we'll get more out of Manassas City Public Schools if we get involved. As students, there's many opportunities for you here, and I hope that you'll take advantage of all that you could possibly be interested in, so that you can start to develop into the person you're going to be as an adult. That's what we're hoping to help provide for you here. So, welcome to a great school year. I wish everyone the best of the year. I wanted to just touch on one thing. About a week ago, I saw on Facebook something that really stood out to me. There's so much out there that seems to be so negative all the time. If you turn on the TV, if you turn on the radio, and sometimes even if you're just around certain people. And I thought this was really interesting. It was an article about how complaining rewires your brain for negativity, and how to break that habit. So I challenge each of us to think about that. Think about, are we thinking of things as glasses half-full or glasses half-empty? We have so much to be grateful for and happy about, and so often we focus on that negative. So rewire yourselves to be positive, because we can get so much more out of every day when we're being positive than we focus on the past. We can't change yesterday, but we can change tomorrow and get more out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. I'd like to welcome you back to a new school year, and I'd like to remind us all that as we start the school year, to not lose sight of the fact that our main goal is to educate children, and that each of our kids are special, each of our kids is important, each of our kids is gifted, and hopefully we can all work together to help them reach their potential. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bushnell?
Thank you, sir. It's my 27th year of welcoming students back to school, and it never gets old. It is the most exciting time of the year to see pre-K and kindergarten kids, first graders, starting out their educations, and then to see young women like the two at the other end of the dais here getting ready to start a new chapter in their lives to conclude one chapter and move on to another. So it's a very, very exciting time. I urge all of you to drive safely. Remember to stop for the school buses. And parents and students, enjoy this year, because it's going to be very special. I've been lucky enough to coach baseball in the city for more than 20 years. I coached boys and girls. Some of them got college scholarships. A couple of them were lucky enough to be drafted and play professionally. In all of the time that I've- that I coached, and that was from T-ball to JV at Osborne, there was never a more special teammate than Greg Ward. He was known for his smile, his heart, his competitive spirit. Greg died last week at the age of 30. Way too early. R.I.P. Greg. Great teammate.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, sir. S.F. O. started off with a great start to the school year yesterday at the convocation. The speaker reflects back to our summer graduates this year, and the story he told, and what he went through in high school, what he endured as a high school graduate. Was he a failure, was he not? Finally graduating college at 28, 29 years old, now has two PhDs, is academically renowned across the country, and what- what an incredible story, what an incredible speaker. And if anyone in the audience wasn't motivated, or at least touched by it, I'd be shocked. Really was a fantastic- I think it's probably the best convocation I've been to, Dr. McGorick. So you and your staff did a great job in how that was organized, and certainly George Mason is a wonderful place to have at. We always talk about our students and how well they are due, how well they are. One of our recent Osborne graduates back in the spring is currently the Commonwealth Virginia Campaign Award winner, and her art is being presented or represented on a poster throughout the Commonwealth. So again, we talk about and we- about how well we do and what we're doing in Manassas, so there's just yet another example that, as someone said about the negativity and what we read, I have not read about anywhere. As far as things going on in the near term, I will try to make some of the Baldwins back-to-school and some of the events going on. I do have a VSBA Board of Directors meeting Thursday, and then the 15th of September, we do have the Legislative Advocacy Conference. So if you can't make it, I'll be presenting, so I could probably give you the Cliff Note versions. Earlier this month, Manassas was selected as one of the 39 best communities to visit in the nation, joining places like Asheville, North Carolina, Charlottesville, Virginia, Burlington, Vermont. I'd like to suggest we're a better place than to visit. This is a fantastic place to live, and it's the work that we do as a board, the work that our staff does, the way we work together that makes it that. Also, another news report coming out. There was also a release as far as where public teacher salaries are in the Commonwealth. Without getting into a lot of specifics, eight of the top highest-paid jurisdictions goes without saying are in Northern Virginia, the others in Chesapeake, and one's in Richmond. We're right in the middle of all that. We are in the most economically challenged in a positive and a negative way environment as we compete for talent. As we talk about that, our average salary, and I have to do the research yet on how they computed average, is $10,000 a year below Arlington and Alexandria, yet we're seventh or eighth in the state, and we're only $10,000 a year above the state average. So you can see, there's a lot of high-end market pressure that we're competing with in Northern Virginia. So it's never too early to start thinking about the budget.
Sure it is. Thank you, sir, and we appreciate the time you put in with VSBA for us. I guess welcome back, everybody. Has been said a thousand times. Thank you, those of you who never left. We have plenty of staff that work 12 months, and they get a vacation here and there, and I appreciate all the effort you guys put in when everybody asks you, "How did your summer go?" And it's sort of like me, you know, with my wife being an educator. So, "What'd you do this summer?" "I worked every damn day." And so did you, and we appreciate it very much. Jonathan Hunley from the Washington Post. We don't get a lot of reporters, and so we're a little bit giddy that you're here, and we appreciate it very much. Welcome back. Thank you, sir. I have no one signed up, sir. Since we have a reporter here, Mr. Bushnell mentioned it, please stop for the school buses. Don't forget, this school board took an action to have cameras on the buses. We're going to get you. Save a life and save yourself a ticket. Protect our children. Thank you, sir. Don't mess with me. I'm on a roll.
You were on a roll yesterday.
Thank you. Citizens comments. I don't have anyone signed up. Would anyone like to speak? Okay, we will continue with the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Mr. Chair, remove the school board of the City of Manassas to adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Bushnell, that the school board of the City of Manassas approved the consent agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry seven, zero. Nice to say seven. Thank you all. We will move on to the discussion agenda, and we will start with the freshman academy. I'm not sure who we got. Ms. Better?
Chair D'Maria and Dr. McGorick and members of the school board, before I begin, I would just like to add that I've been in this profession for 36, 37 years. I've gone to tons of convocations. Yesterday was absolutely the most powerful and profoundly moving one that I've ever been to. I was very proud to be a part of that morning. And I know you probably didn't do this, but Facebook was flooded last night with your teachers who were raving about how they felt like it was a game changer and a life changer. So thank you for that. Thank you for that. I just would like to go on record with that.
Again, we didn't do it, but like I said yesterday, I'll take credit for that.
Okay, good. At this level, it's called research, right? Not stealing. So we're very pleased to have an opportunity, Ms. Ashley Faiborg, Assistant Principal at Osborne, and myself, in presenting to you our plans for the freshman academy, known as the SOAR Academy, that will be opening in a week. And as you know, it's not the first time that Osborne High School has had a freshman academy, but it is a new and improved, in our opinion, and a different iteration of that dynamic. Motivated primarily by our research over the past year at transformative schools, and what really makes a difference in the lives of students as they transition from middle to- middle school to high school, and what we felt we could implement at our school that would promote them to being successful seniors and career-ready and college-ready. So with that said, Ms. Faiborg, want to join me over here?
Thank you. So the freshman academy approach is about the whole child. We're not just looking at students who are struggling in one area or multiple areas. We're looking at every aspect of the child, and it's looking very deeply at their successes and what we can do to support them. The purpose of the freshman academy is to really prepare students for post-secondary, for personal growth. Everything we're doing is about building their high school experience and allowing them to transition into a successful high school career. As they move through Osborne, the freshman academy experience will follow them and carry them. Why do we need to SOAR? Our program is called SOAR because we are really teaching them efficacy. We're teaching them what is a culture of success. When we look at our cultural resource, we understand that culture is whatever you're bringing to the table as a person, whatever you've been taught to value is your culture. And everyone has a different idea about education and what success and what efficacy is. So we are going to define that as SOAR, and we are going to teach our students to SOAR. They will be actively instructed about what a successful and effective way to be at school is. One of the things we're going to be looking at very closely this year is our students of promise. When we began exploring how we can really make the most impact with our proven data methods, we started looking at students who were unsuccessful. So what is our- what's our- what is our target here? And we looked at a longitudinal study that said that 75% of students will drop out if by eighth grade they have attended school less than 80% of the time, or they had failed math or English. So when we're identifying our students that we're going to look very closely at, this is some anecdotal data that we have met with our eighth-grade teachers and administrators, and we've collected, so that we can be prepared for these students. We found also that 69% of high school dropouts claimed that adults did not expect them to perform well. So high expectations and effectiveness is something that we implemented into our program. Teachers that had- teacher expectation is incredibly, incredibly important in showing students that they are capable, that they can be successful, and that we expect the absolute best of them. When we are comparing our data, we're looking at our eighth-grade data coming in. We have all the anecdotal notes about our students that are at risk of dropping out, and we also are looking at, what does it look like if you're at risk by ninth grade? So this is our information of what it looks like to be at risk by ninth grade. And this is really how we're going to measure the efficacy of our program. We're going to be exploring this data over time, and we'll be able to chart the decline in these at-risk factors. This is a list of some of the resources we're using as a part of our freshman academy. It's pretty extensive. The students are going to be housed in the Johnson Wing, which is an incredible learning space. They're going to be using Quad Scouts, which will- Quad Squads, which I'll talk about in a minute, to form the core circle of care for our students. There's a rescue and recovery program. We have our students of promise collaboration. We have a Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens book study, and we have transition activities throughout the school year. The Quad Squad is a group of four content teachers who will have the same students in common. And what this really does is it takes a group of about 500 kids, and it reduces that number significantly, so that those teachers are able to sit down and have conversations about, by name and by need, about each individual student. What is working for this student that I am not doing? What is a challenge for this student that I need to- that I need to understand? So all of this- all of these conversations will be happening on a regular basis, and teachers will be recording these interventions. And this is important, because this will follow students through their four years of high school. Once we know how to successfully build relationships with them, once we understand their individual struggles, once we have charted out the ways that we can improve their educational experience on an individual level, that information will follow them to 10th grade. So the teachers at 10th grade will be able to use that as well. This is our circle of support. At the center is our eagle, each individual student. You can see we have a very, very dynamic circle of support. In order to facilitate our squad collaborations, there was a lot of work that went into Power School. Lisa Warner did a great job with that. Ninth-grade English history and science teachers will be located at the Johnson Wing. Math teachers will be traveling due to their size. But our stu- all of our teachers will get together that are in a Quad Squad, and they will sit down and have time together where they are planning and actively discussing individual students. Students are going to be part of an identity. Not only are they Osborne Eagles, but the SOAR, which is our Positive Behavior Intervention Support Program, will be able to be defined as their team. So students will come up with a team identity as they explore PBIS and SOAR. And the freshman academy will actually have a nest. So if you are the mentor teacher, your nest will be in your Eagle Block. You'll share those students. So you'll see them in class. You'll also see them in Eagle Block. This is really outlining all the systems of support. I'm not going to read through all of it, because it's pretty extensive. But what you'll see here is what all students receive, what our students of promise receive, and then all students who qualify as meeting all the criteria for all the dropout risk factors are going to be participating in a mentor or freshman program, which I'll speak about. Want to talk about rescue recovery?
Sure. So one of the things that we're going to implement for all of our students is a rescue and recovery team. The research is pretty clear that students must, must pass five classes and be promoted to sophomore with their cohort in order to stay on the right trajectory for graduation, and five is the minimum. And in order to do that, you have to- you have to form professional learning communities around collaborative learning teams that are looking at data of achievement for each student. So the rescue and recovery team is sort of designed with all of that in mind. That is the umbrella of their work. And it consists of the assistant principal, dean, school counselor, and if appropriate, the math interventionist, truancy officer, Eagle Block teacher, social worker, student, and parent. And we are hoping to tap into some of our powerful community resources as well. If the student's a special ed student, the case manager would be part of the rescue and recovery team. Just like Ms. Faiborg was- had mentioned earlier, our whole point is to use data to not only analyze what's going on with a student, but also to dictate what we believe will be powerful interventions on a timely basis. So interventions are determined to stop academic sliding or stalling, and redirection could include a lot of things: career counseling, intensified academic support, and maybe redesign of their class load if necessary.
Mentor a freshman is kind of our ultimate layer of support, and it reminds me so much of the convocation speaker we had yesterday. What we'll be doing on Friday at our faculty meeting is I will be- I'll have a list of students, and I'll have information about each student on a page. Faculty members will be able to come up and volunteer to be a mentor for that student. Now, being a mentor means that you're going to work with that student across four years. It means that you're not the heavy, but you are the mentor. You're the advocate. You're a safe space, and you're somebody that student can talk to about anything, and you're there to always back them up and care about them. So when I met with the teachers about this and designed this program, this was an aspect that was used in the past, which they were incredibly passionate about, and they're asking me what their limit is. And how many kids can I adopt? How many kids can I mentor this year? So people are very excited about this. We're going to be training teachers about how to do this. There's lots of things you can do to encourage a student, and there's- we have some incredibly creative and supportive staff. But this is going to be something where we will be communicating with the mentors. Teachers will have that mentor name, so that if they see a student struggling, if they need, you know, "I don't know what's going on with this kid. Have they talked to you? Am I missing something?" There's going to be a network there, where the teachers, the coaches, the mentor, they can all speak about the student to help them and encourage them. So I think I had talked about this a little bit, but what's- what I'm excited about for this program is we're not just building a foundation in a transition for ninth grade, but it's for all of high school, because our data and what's successful for each individual student will follow them. So students of promise will continue to be monitored. Mentors will work with the students for four years, and as the class of 2020 moves into their sophomore year, they're going to participate in additional efficacy and cultural education. One of the ways we're doing this is teaching them The Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens, which is a book that students are reading to learn seven habits to be effective in reaching their goals. This is an example of one of our habits. The first habit is to be proactive, and it's very empowering. It teaches students that they are the force, that they take responsibility for their own lives. And it's- it teaches them to make choices based on principles and values rather than their mood and circumstance. And what The Seven Habits really is doing is it's teaching students how to be reflective and think about how their own actions are shaping their future. It's slowing down and thinking about themselves. And we can go on to the next slide. It's about the lessons. All the lessons are geared towards personal reflection. So it's not necessarily understanding the habit as it's written, but understanding the habit as it pertains to your individual life, in school and out of school. This is an example of one of the worksheets that we use. All of these lesson plans are already available for our teachers who are using these and are downloading these, and they have the ability to adapt them as they need for their individual students as well. I think this is our last slide, and this is kind of summarizing some of the transition opportunities we've already had this year. And I'm very excited that we've had so many opportunities for our students to come out and really learn about our program and our high school and what it's going to mean to be an Osborne Eagle. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hope people are watching tonight. We- for those that are watching tonight, we've had this presentation one other time, and in our July meeting, when it wasn't on television, and you all did such a wonderful job, and you've got such great information and great ideas and great plans that it needed to be on camera, and we appreciate it very much. Are there any comments or questions?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you. We have seen it before, but just some questions really to kind of put out there, I think, as well for the audience. You talked on one of the charts about the risk factors, especially for ninth graders. And one of them was if they attend less than 70% of the class, or they're absent more than 30% of the time, and if they only have two credits, and there was a parenthetical "and," they're not promoted, or if you will, they're not- they don't stay with their class. The reality is, if they don't- if they only have two credits, and they've been absent that much, they're not going to be promoted with the rest of them. So we're not implying social promotion, because I know a lot of people have that. What we're really talking about is early intervention.
Yes.
Then the question I have, and I can't recall if I asked this before, when you look at the number of students that we're looking at, or students with promise, how many were identified coming out of the rising ninth graders, and then how many are actually in the program, will be participating as students with promise? In other words, is it inclusive one-for-one? Is there actually more students participating as students with promise that maybe potentially met the risk factors, or do we have some that just couldn't fit in?
Everyone who met all the risk factors receives a mentor freshman. Everybody who met any of the risk factors is a student of promise. So all of our students of promise are going to have their- be individually spoken about and collaborated about by their teachers. So all those students were able to come in, and it was- And it was quite a few students. But when you divide it up by the teams, it's manageable for the teachers.
Does that answer your question? So all freshmen are part of the Freshman Academy.
Right.
We have 95 students that are members of Student of Promise. We have not determined yet of those 95, how many will be Tier Three. Because there's some data that we'll collect the first week of school. One thing that we did tell you last time, we didn't tell you today, is that any student who requests a mentor, even if they're not in that inner core, we would certainly, certainly give them one. And I think that these ladies will be able to tell you that's so important. So, you know, that's the whole design of Eagle Block, is actually to build those relationships and have that sort of like little protected space the whole time you go. And this is making it even more so. And the other thing I wanted to point out to you is that this is fluid. Because what our goal is, is for this number to be reduced over the course of their freshman years. So we would hope that kids that need that really dynamic, ongoing, intentional directive support right from the beginning, that they are able to build on their own self-reflection and their own, through their own successes in their core classes, and that they will become more confident students and not necessarily need that same level of support.
Okay. Ms. Bender, thank you. 95 did answer because that exactly, if you think about it from any kind of six sigma thing, anything like that, you're focusing on the 20% of the students who are going to give you the biggest bang for the buck.
We are focusing on the kids that, they're not at the, they're not, I don't want to mislead. So they're not necessarily only earning two credits. They have met other criteria.
But they've got the risk. And that's what we're trying to do is keep them on track to graduate with the career and life skills they need.
That's right. Like I told the faculty the other day, we had a great summer school graduation. We did, this summer. But our goal is to never have to have a summer school graduation. That's our goal. So with this class, you know, we're throwing everything we've got at them.
Well, it was nice to be there. And if you've only got one kid next year, Mr. Albrecht and I will be there.
And I promise I'll be there too.
I'm not going to promise anybody else, but I'll make him.
You promise it for me, I can go. I'll be there regardless.
I know. Ms. Maddick, do you have something?
Yes, actually, thank you. First off, I would like to say that high expectations is really, really important because I know when you go into a classroom setting and a teacher has high expectations, it changes everything. They expect more of you, which means your attitude is completely different versus in a classroom setting where a teacher doesn't set those expectations the very first day. Another thing I had a question about was related to Eagle Block versus Quad Squad? And how are they different? How are they similar? Because for me, my experience with Eagle Block is very, very positive. My Eagle Block teacher is also my caseworker, so I work very closely with her on a lot of things. And she is, she is my support system. I rely on her for a lot and she does so much for me. And she knows a lot about me. She knows all about my homework and all my classwork and anything I struggle with. She knows about it because she's also my caseworker, so that goes hand in hand. So I want to know how that's, what the difference is and the similarities. And also, I don't think you said that Eagle Block teachers, when you mentioned the rescue and recovery, did you say that Eagle Block teachers would be at those rescue and recovery meetings?
We did. If I didn't, it was a mistake.
So they will be there? Because Eagle Block, I don't know how it changes with the mentors versus the Quad Squad things, but for me, the Eagle Block teacher is the prominent person that is my support system and who I have the closest relationship with.
Sure. So thank you for saying that because I love hearing great things about Eagle Block.
Yeah, it's fantastic. And I don't know if it's for every student, but for me, it is really a fantastic thing.
Okay. So our Quad Squads are going to be the four core teachers. So if you're on a team, one of those four core teachers will be your mentor, or I'm sorry, will be your Eagle Block teacher. So you'll have that as a Nest. So that's what it is. It doesn't really change it too much. It's just, it's going to, if you're in that team, it'll probably be one of those teachers. So you'll still have your Eagle Block.
So it's just more of an opportunity to build teacher relationships, which I think is fantastic. Because I have someone very close to me who you could consider not maybe an ad for students, but just has something.
At Promise.
And, yes. Exactly. And teacher relationships was what got her through last year. It was what a teacher did for her. And I think the more teacher relationships you have, and I have fantastic teacher relationships, and I know that I can always count on my teachers, whether it's my Eagle Block teacher or my math teacher. And so I think building more of those is fantastic. I have one more question about Eagle Block Fridays. What is that? Is that any different than just regular Eagle? I don't know. Sorry.
When our students are working on their Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teens, there will be Fridays. It won't be every single Friday because we have some remediation we're doing as well. But Fridays will be a time when those lessons will take place.
So that would be a day, if we had Eagle Block, you wouldn't be allowed to switch Eagle Blocks?
You would be with your Nest. You'd be with your Eagle Block teacher. And you'd report for that time and you would explore and reflect.
So you would stay in your Eagle Block just to work on?
Yes.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
And keep in mind that everybody is geographically next to each other. So it would be super easy just to go next door and work with.
If you needed something, yeah. Because I think that's fantastic. That's one of the other great things about Eagle Block is you have your Eagle Block teacher who you have a chance, who you're with every day to build a relationship with. But then you can go to whatever classes you need. Because I know especially this year, maybe I'll be doing that when I'm working on college applications. Because my English teacher from 10th grade, I'm going to go to her because I have a fantastic relationship with her to help me if I need help. So I think that's, it's all great. And I'm really, I'm really glad to hear that this is all being implemented.
One thing that I would like to mention before we close is that the original Freshman Academy kind of dissipated with the advent of Eagle Block. And so there was discussion with the faculty last year on how we could have both. And this is where we landed. And when we, when Ms. Faborg asked the faculty to consider becoming part of the Freshman Academy as one of the core teachers, the response was overwhelming. These are not teachers that we dragged kicking and screaming to like embrace this notion. These are teachers who are in. I mean, they are so dedicated to this. They, they're all about professional learning communities, working with these freshmen, monitoring them through four years, seeing what we can put in place for them, you know, when they move into their sophomore year. It's exciting to be around them because they're so excited about it. And, you know, we all know that like enthusiasm is contagious. So, I mean, that's why, like I love to listen to Faith talk. I just get excited about the school year when I'm listening to her. But anyway, so I really do believe that upperclassmen, you're allowed to come over and visit anytime.
I did, actually. I was thinking about that right now. Because I know they will be, I mean, kind of separate for most of it. But like with math, there's so many different levels.
So they're going to be traveling.
Lots of traveling.
I think when you guys see the teachers that are involved in Freshman Academy, you will be, oh my word, this is amazing. Because they're some of our rock stars.
There's some amazing teachers. And I, and I think that maybe taking them over and putting them in the Johnson Center is actually kind of nice. Because I remember my freshman year, the ramp, the back hallway and the ramp. You start at the top of the ramp and you look down and it's a sea of people and it's terrifying. Because you're like, oh my God, am I going to make it to class sometime? I don't know what to do. People are bumping into me. And I think it's, it will be calming and you'll still get some of it because you'll be going back and forth. So it will just be a gradual into the mix kind of thing. And it's not going to be all at once overwhelming. So I think that's something that's really fantastic that will help.
Excellent.
Anyone else?
We're so glad you're here.
I know. I did not pay her to say anything. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
We appreciate it very much. Annual Review of School Crisis Plans.
Good evening, Chairman DiMario, Superintendent McGorick, and members of the board. I'm here tonight just to do the annual review that we do each year. To let you know, the goal of the Manassas City Public School Crisis Emergency Management and Medical Response Plan is to ensure the safety of all of the members of our learning community through a rapid, coordinated, and effective response to and recovery from any emergency that could occur in our school setting. Just to give you an update on fire drills, in order to comply with the standards of accreditation, every public school this year will still need to conduct at least one fire drill per week during the first month of school and at least one fire drill each month for the remainder of the 2016-2017 school year. And that's what we have done in the past and that's what it will stay for this year. Lockdown drills, in order to comply with the Code of Virginia and the standards of accreditation, every public school will need to conduct two lockdown drills during the first 20 days of school, one of which must occur in September, and two additional lockdown drills during the remainder of the school year, one of which must occur in January. So we have developed a ledger of all of the drill schedules and we work with our safety coordinators, principals, and assistant principals. And they always do an outstanding job on all of our drills. Just to let you know also, Manassas City Public Schools, as we work on our emergency management plans, works with the City of Manassas Department of Family Services, Manassas Emergency Management, Manassas City Police Department, the City of Manassas Fire and Rescue Department, the American Red Cross, the Prince William Health District, and the Virginia Department of Emergency Management. And I'll be certifying tomorrow that we're all in compliance with all of our requirements.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Are there any questions or discussion?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Stop-arm cameras. Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening, Chairman DiMario, Dr. McGorick, and school board members. We're here tonight to just give you an update on the progress of the stop-arm camera system that we're implementing. With me tonight is Mr. Rob Knox. He's our vendor from Force Multiplier Solutions. He's going to give you a small PowerPoint presentation in a few minutes. But I just wanted you to know that I think as of today, we've got 43 of our school buses that have been fully implemented. We are on track to be through fully implementing the other 17 buses prior to the end of this week. We've met with all of our partners, which is the police, the Commonwealth Attorney, the Chief Judge for Prince William County. And today, I think we finally worked out a process with the city treasurer. And so we are now embarking onto a PR campaign to let the public know about this program and what we hope to accomplish. So with that, I will turn it over to Rob Knox and then we'll be able to answer any questions or concerns you may have.
Thanks. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having me back to give you an update on our program, much of which you really just heard from Andy, but I'll try and fill in some holes a little bit. For the benefit of those who might not have heard about the program when you decided to select us to provide it, I thought I'd start with just a few thoughts about our company and our approach. Force Multiplier Solutions, for which I serve as the regional president, is a student safety company. And we deliver student safety by installing highly sophisticated IT equipment, cameras, and recorders on buses that perform both camera image collection on the interior of a bus as well as the exterior. Now, the way we do this is really through two goals that our company has set. One is to first of all, improve the safety of students generally. And secondly, to try and improve the motorist behavior in the communities we partner with. That is to reduce the incidence of illegal passes by school buses, make people respect the bus. One of the ways we accomplish this is through 100% installation. We'll install all 60 of your buses with the interior and the exterior cameras that I mentioned and use those to collect images of people to pass the bus, using that revenue to pay for all the equipment that we're installing for you, absolutely free of charge. Now, we are on track with our original schedule, which is to have all buses installed by the end of this week. I have to tell you, it was tough, but we are on track. And what are we installing? What you see before you now is an image of the various components that make up our Bus Guard safety system. The first one mentioned is the traffic manager. In some, we have 11 cameras on each bus. But the traffic manager is the exterior part that holds seven of those cameras. These cameras take the images of drivers who are passing the bus while the stop arm is actually out and they should be stopped. Additionally, we have three interior cameras that collect images on the inside of the bus and provide a strong deterrents from misbehavior, bullying, and other sorts of things that have affected our students' ability to learn. Also, we have a rear-facing camera that's used to collect images of vehicles that may be following the bus. It also is very beneficial in trying to understand the facts surrounding bus accidents, which are often people riding into the back of a bus. All of this together constitutes our Bus Guard system and is transmitting images into our DVR computer essentially, which is retained on the bus and transmits all the information over a private network through cellular technology. Next slide, please. Now, none of this matters if it doesn't work. And so what we do every day, and we will do each day here in Manassas, is we will check using this health check system, the functionality of each component on each bus. If you think of it, each line there represents a bus and each one of those little green boxes represents one component of each bus system. A camera perhaps, or a microphone. When it's all green, as you see in this image, it's all, it's all good. Everything's functioning as designed. If one of these components was defective, it would appear as red and we would dispatch local maintenance service providers to swap that piece of equipment and get it back up and running for you. So unlike other equipment, here in Manassas, our system will provide you effective coverage all the time and be quickly responded to if we have any problems at all. This is our program timeline. We started very aggressively. You awarded us the contract and we committed, that happened in mid-June, we committed to having it all done by the end of August. We're on track for that. And as you can see by this image, by next Sunday, we will have all 60 buses loaded here in Manassas, ready for the school year. Now, we'll go into a phase of a grace period, you may say, during the month of September, where the police may be issuing warnings rather than citations to violators who pass the buses. After that, then citations would be issued, we're imagining, beginning in October. Our project status right now, as Mr. Hawkins had stated, is on track with all stakeholders: the treasurer's office, the police department, the courts, all of the, all of the parties who need to be a part of this. The treasurer, of course, for payments. And that was sort of a big process to work through, but we've been able to do that. Our installations are on track, as I've said, in spite of these various conditions. We all know that it's been very, very warm recently and that's created difficult circumstances for our installation teams to work with, but we've been able to work through those successfully. Next slide, please. We are beginning to work through our public service announcement. And I know tonight even serves in some part as an opportunity for the public to realize that Manassas City has begun a stop-arm program. And that if they choose to drive illegally past a school bus when it's stopped to load or unload children and the stop arm is flashing, that they may be subject to a citation issued by the police department here in Manassas. Everyone that passes a school bus, in our experience from our company's point of view, doesn't do it deliberately. And so part of this campaign to educate will be to address the questions that are left unknown to some motorists in the community who might not be clear about when they're in, they are in an oncoming vehicle, they need to stop for stop arm with a bus that's on the opposite lane. We'll talk about that. We'll give some printed materials. We'll educate those who are unclear about the law. We'll inform those about our program, that is to say, your program, and the consequences of not complying. And this will all happen before we go into operational mode in October and the police begin issuing citations for violations. And I just have to say it one more time, this system is absolutely free to Manassas City schools, to the Manassas City government. We aren't charging a dime. It's completely funded through violator revenue, which is shared with the city to use for programs as necessary, such as additional school safety enhancements.
Thank you, Mr. Knox. I've been very excited about this because I know it happens. And I know our children can be in danger. And that's our number one goal, is to make sure our children are safe. I'm even more excited about it now, knowing the amount of cameras, the amount of effort, the amount of money you're putting into these things. And it's scary to think that you can stay afloat on violations. And that's scary for the number of violations that are out there and how unsafe our children can be crossing the street when they should have no issues and they do. So I'm very excited about making our kids safe and I appreciate your efforts and our staff's effort to bring this forward to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I want to tell you about another group who's very excited. We met today, Mr. Knox and I both met with and presented this to the bus drivers today during their, during their program today. And they were very excited. We almost got a standing ovation when we left. They were clapping when we left. So it was a very, very excited group about having this, about having, about having the additional cameras on the inside that will help them, and about having to be, having a panic button for them to request help if needed, and having the ability... a panic button for them to request help if needed, and having the ability for people from dispatch to be able to talk to the driver and see what's going on in the bus at all times, on real-time basis. So this is a tremendous upgrade for our school buses, and our bus drivers appreciate the, the efforts that's being made.
And they know best.
They do.
And they will no longer have to scream out the window as much at the people passing by.
All right, Ms. Sebeski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, we, we have talked about this for a while. Thank you for helping keep the children of Manassas City safe by bringing this initiative to us. I love the fact that we're being proactive, I love the fact that you're trying to educate people that may have forgotten the law in order to keep the children safe. And I'm sure that the bus drivers were very happy today to hear that it keeps, they don't want to see anything happen, they get, they love those children that they take to and from school every day. So thank you again for coming out and, once again, and going through this as we begin our school year, and make sure our public knows that this is a, an important initiative to keep everybody safe.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Ms. Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to echo the board's sentiments and thank the General Assembly who changed the law last session so we could actually implement this correctly. And I want to stress, this is not about revenue, this is about student safety. I sat at the state level for four years on the state insurance panel at the education level, and every year I was on the state board, there was a child killed or crippled in the Commonwealth because someone ran a red light camera, ran by a school bus stop-arm. And it's just unacceptable, and it is, you know, we're doing something here in Manassas about it. To that, Ms. Hawkins, you indicated the drivers are fully supported, I want to make sure you also, in their orientation, remind them that there are cameras on them, and we have policies about appropriate behavior that we expect our drivers, and we will have visible evidence. So I want to make sure they are fully aware of that.
And they are.
Thank you.
And we, and Mr. Knox talked about that today, that there would be a camera on them and down the stairway, and then throughout, throughout the bus for the children. And those cameras are an objective way for us to evaluate not only the behavior of these students, but also the behavior of the driver, and whether they are doing their job appropriately. And so they were fine with that.
And by the way, I think they have been, because otherwise we'd have seen it on YouTube, just like we do every metro bus driver who's doing something wrong.
That's right.
Our kids are smart.
I, I think it's important to remember that all the students that ride your buses have video cameras on them.
That's right.
Yes. Anyone else? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We truly appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
School counseling project update. Dr. Stone?
Good evening, Chairman DiMaria, Dr. McCorrick, members of the board. I'm here to present an update on the counseling services that were provided. More to the point, I'm presenting an update on the school counseling survey that was conducted again in the spring. Again, this is our stakeholders' perceptions, and it is what we will use to benchmark our work as we go forward this year. During the previous school year, we did partner with K-12 Insight, and we administered three different surveys. Our school counseling survey went to parents, staff, and students twice, once in the fall and again in the spring. We had a professional development needs assessment that was administered specifically to our school counselors to determine what they need for the upcoming school year. And we have a post-service satisfaction survey, which can be difficult to say, that is, for our students, and each time they see a counselor, they are afforded the opportunity to complete the survey. That was implemented very little at the beginning of, or at the end of last year. We do have that in full development and ready-to-go mode for kids this year. Counselors do have a business card that they can hand to students that clearly notes the website they can go to and fill out that survey after each time that they meet with a counselor. It is important to note that in those surveys, we did receive 9,762 responses from our parents, students, and staff. That was an amazing number, so we have lots of information from stakeholders to move forward with. We surveyed folks in four specific areas. The first one is overall quality, and what we're looking at are changes in perception from our stakeholders from fall to spring. In the spring, 78% of our parents rated the program quality as excellent or good, which was a 10 percentage point increase from fall. And you can see our students and staff, 74% rated the program as excellent or good in the spring, which is about a 3% decrease, and 64% of staff members rated the program quality as excellent or good in the spring, which was an increase of three percentage points from the fall. In terms of school counselor familiarity, parents, guardians, and students all reported being more familiar with their counselor, which was excellent, with the highest increase being at the high school level, an increase of 14%. In the school counselor accessibility and disposition, in the spring, 77% of the students said that when they have a problem, there is a counselor they can go to for help, which was a slight increase from the fall. And 43% of our parents said their child's counselor was committed to getting their child college and career ready, which is a five percentage point increase from the fall. In terms of counseling support services, all of the levels of students continue to report that counseling services are helpful and lessons are helpful as they work with their counselors. And the other thing to note here is that our parents are reporting an increased need for additional services from our counselors. So that leaves us with a few identified areas for improvement. The first is increased opportunities for student and school counselor engagement. Our counselors have come back to school very proactive, they are working on developing a year-long calendar that they are turning in that shows when their lessons are, what activities they are providing for parents in the evening or, and/or during the day for students, which speaks to the other piece with increased parent contact. They are working on setting those regular meetings with parents, having at least one contact in some manner, whether that be by phone, whether it be inviting them to different activities they have, sending home a flyer that details what it is that they do offer that parents can access if they need. Targeted and meaningful professional development, our counselors really spoke to the fact that they are looking for more professional development in the area of social and emotional health of our students. All of them, as of yesterday, no, as of today, are currently trained in the youth mental health first aid training. They all found that very beneficial and are excited to have that information, you know, in their toolbox as they work with students this coming school year. We'll be working with them about mid-September in a process with K-12 Insight, who's going to come and share all of this data with them that we collected during the previous school year, and really work through a process of now that we have all of that, what is our plan moving forward as counselors, looking at our own data to move forward in, in benchmarking our process, and really improving the services we have both to kids and our parents as a whole. And we are looking at that as the glass is half-full, in a very positive manner.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions or comments?
Okay. Sir? I have one comment, it's tied to 43% of parents believe the counselor was committed to getting their child ready for college or career readiness. And that's, while up, an alarmingly low number to me, and it could be because of the definition of the word committed. It's like when the, the hen and the pig talk about a bacon and egg breakfast, and one's involved and one's committed. So I don't know if maybe people don't understand the word committed, or what, but that's, to me, that's the one piece of data you talked about I think we need to drive in on, because that says that more than half our staff, their perception is they don't care.
And I think part of that is also at the elementary level, is working with our parents to understand, what are we doing at an elementary level that's actually college and career ready? I think that our, our middle school and our high school parents would say that we're committed to that, but at the elementary level, I think they're-
So continued academic success, maybe for the elementary level, it's a different perspective. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Chair? Ms. Bushnell?
There still appears to be a gap, a user gap at the middle school level. I still find that somewhat disconserving, even though the glass is half-full. Elementary and high school both are above 70%, and, and the engagement of middle school counselors is at 64%. There's about a 10% or greater gap in terms of engagement, and we'd seen that in all of the earlier data too, I would, I would hope. Where's this one here, the? No? No? It was the second to the last slide. The one before, this one. So elementary, middle, and then intermediate and high school students, so the counselors' lessons were helpful. 74% at elementary, 78% at high school, 67% at intermediate, and we'd seen that gap in earlier data, we'd also seen a gap in terms of engagement at that level. That one of the reasons they said it was helpful was because there were more students at the middle school level that hadn't been engaged with counselors. That's, that 10% gap still seems strange to me in that the same children flowing through the same school system are engaged at the elementary level and the high school level, you know, four percentage points plus or minus, you know, but 10% lower in the middle. So it still says to me that middle school still needs to be looked at, and I know you're doing it.
Absolutely.
But that data is still, that's too big a gap for, for people all in part of the same school system, the same department, so, thank you. And we're really excited about what you're doing, and glad that you're doing it, so.
Thank you. Ms. Sebeski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dr. Stone. I think you led off by saying, this is your baseline, this is what we're entering this year with. Everyone is now aware that these are our baseline numbers, and that expectation is for them not to be this. And I believe that people can't fix something if they don't know what is broken, or they don't know what is wrong. Perception is that person's reality. So we've now given a new reality, so everyone has something to work from. And I, I think that's just where I want to go from here. You know, I, I think that a lot of interesting things have come from this data, and I look forward to hearing from you. I'm assuming we'll hear something after the fall numbers all come in, and that hopefully a year from now, we're going through this, we'll see a significant difference now that the, the reality of this is going to be the new perception, and what needs to be, to be done to help all students achieve their, their maximum potential.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Faith? Ms. Maddick?
Uh, thank you. I had a quick question, because I know that these are our baseline, so we want to only go up from here, of course, but I know that there has been a lot of movement and shifting and changing in the counselor program. And so with that being said, this being our first year with all the changes, how are we planning to keep those numbers up? Because I know that there, like, I have already been affected with the shifting in the counselor, which is fine, it all worked out perfectly great and everything like that, but there, it's change, and, which is, it can be good and it can be bad, but since this is our baseline, we only want to go up from here, like, what are we really doing? Because counselor, being, like we said, like, relationships are really important, and since we have less counselors now, how do we, how are we going to only increase that number since there are less? That's where I just, I'm really concerned.
So the key piece of this is that the counselors are developing, they have the student services plan and the things that they're working on in that plan, and they are developing a year-long calendar that helps them pace those things out, and how they are meeting with students and meeting their needs, and, and the same time, meeting with parents and those needs that come in from parents as well. So that's what we're working on as a whole, and we should see an increase in all of that.
Okay, that sounds great, I can't wait.
She's going to check on you. That was an optimistic cynic. It is half-full.
But it is truly exciting that, that we are looking at the stakeholders, and that we are looking at perceptions of the users, because that was something that this board had challenged us to do, was to say, it's not good enough to say, how do the counselors feel about what they're doing? Everyone has to understand that it's, what do the students and parents feel about? What, what services are being provided, and how meaningful are they to them and to their lives? And this is just the cap to a very exciting evening of us increasing the services, increasing what we're doing, helping the students, helping them become more safe, and helping them become better students, so excellent start.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Stone.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe our agenda is complete. Move to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bushnell, second by Mrs. Kiefer. To adjourn, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Carry seven, opposed, carry 7-0. Thank you all.